Guide us as we do the business of Stokes County Schools. We look to you for wisdom and help. Be with our students daily. Protect them, uplift them, be with our teachers, and help them to navigate uncharted waters and deal with very stressful times. Encourage them, help them to know they are loved and appreciated daily. Be with all Stokes County families and bless them, I pray. Be with everyone that is sick and struggling. Help our new board members. Also, guide them in helping our students and guide the entire school board. Watch over everyone and be with them this Christmas season. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Rice, could you lead us in the National Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great, thank you. At this point, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and turn it over to Mr. Fred Johnson.
Swearing in first.
Oh, swearing in first, I'm sorry.
We have with us tonight Resident Superior Court Judge Angela Puckett, who will adjourn with the swearing-in ceremony of our newly elected Board Member. Angela Puckett, honor to her. Is white?
You don't mind letting the new guy say it? Okay. All right, you have someone to hold the Bible for you?
All right, if you'll put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Cheryl Knight.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of my office?
Of my office.
As a member of the Stokes County Board of Education.
As a member of the Stokes County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Cheryl Knight.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear?
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful?
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina?
To the state of North Carolina.
And the constitutional powers and authorities?
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established?
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof?
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor?
And that I will endeavor?
To support, maintain, and defend?
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Robertson.
Hold the Bible. If you'll put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Vaughn Robertson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of my office?
Of my office.
As a member of the Stokes County Board of Education?
As a member of the Stokes County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Vaughn Robertson.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear?
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful?
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina?
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities?
And to the constitutional powers and authority.
Which are or may be established?
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof?
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support?
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend?
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bryant?
All right, so if you'll put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Dwayne Bryant.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws?
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina?
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Discharge the duties of my office?
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Stokes County Board of Education?
As a member of the Stokes County Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Dwayne Bryant.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear?
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful?
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina?
To the state of North Carolina.
And the constitutional powers?
And the constitutional powers.
And authorities?
And authorities.
Which are or may be established?
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof?
By the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor?
And that I will endeavor?
To support, maintain, and defend?
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to nominate Cheryl Knight as chairman.
Cheryl Knight has been nominated under any other nominations.
At this time, I would like to nominate Mike Rogers.
Mike Rogers has been nominated under any other nominations. Here we go, I declare nominations closed. We will now vote. For the board of nominations, all those in favor of Cheryl Knight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please have a force vote so I can hear those. I recall the wrong, Ms. Knight, have you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Robertson, have you voted?
Aye.
Bryant, have you voted?
Aye.
Let's move. That is a majority of the sitting members of the board. That would be sufficient for the chair of Ms. Knight as chairperson. Now, we declare a vote to pull open the nominations for the position of vice chair. Do I have any nominations for that position?
I nominate Vaughn Robertson.
Robertson has been nominated under any other nominations. Hearing none, I declare nomination closed. I ask for a motion for the election of Mr. Robertson by affirmation. Do I have such a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Bryant, it is there a second, is that nomination?
A second.
Second by Ms. Knight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? We don't need that.
Just a call, Fred.
Hearing none. I declare that the motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you.
Shall we move about? Is that what we normally do, correct?
I don't know where we move to right now. Oh, you've got the microphone right there.
Okay, well, we'll stay then. Um, give me one minute then.
If you would sign these as chair, we'll hand them out to see.
Is there anyone here that wants to sign up for public comments?
And just a reminder that we are on the internet, so if you speak tonight, to please get close to the microphone and speak into the microphone clearly so that anyone would be able to hear us online as well as in the room.
Um, I was just saying, at this point, if anyone had anything, board members, that they wanted to say, that this would be a good opportunity.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, before we move to the recess, we also need to do the reaffirmation of the Code of Ethics before the agenda. Move up the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, if anyone had anything they would like to share, please fill through.
Well, I'd just like to congratulate everybody here tonight for their seat on the board. Um, and I'd also like to thank everybody that came tonight to, uh, for the swearing-in ceremony. It's good to see everybody, and I want to thank everybody for their, uh, support, uh, for me over the, uh, election. Uh, it was, uh, something we couldn't be here without, the support of everybody, and, uh, it really, uh, really a humbling experience. So I do want to thank everybody, thank you for your support, and, uh, and we really want to strive to be the best board members that we can and make Stokes County Schools the best that we can make them. I know we're having a, uh, a really tough time right now with the COVID. Uh, we're hoping that, uh, maybe this is going to be on the backside of it here. We're going to get past it. Um, and then next year, when we start back to school, hopefully it'll be back to a regular school. So, um, again, thank everybody for coming out. Uh, thank y'all for your support, and we're going to need your support to make Stokes County Schools the best yet. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out myself. Uh, I see a lot of people that helped support us, and I just want you to know from the bottom of my heart, I thank you very humbly. And Vaughn echoed a lot of things there that I feel the same way about. And in order of moving this movement on, I want to be quite, thank y'all.
I'll just say I do appreciate, appreciate everyone and the opportunity to serve, and I ask for your prayers because we all need them. It's not an easy job. And I just want you to know that I can always be reached by phone or email. I do, um, value your input, and again, I appreciate you and wish you a Merry Christmas. All right, at this time, we'll take a brief five-minute recess.
Sorry, say, why don't we take them? I must, I must take them off here and lay them down like that.
Down, so if you can just hold it.
We'll continue. At this time, I need approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as it stands? Or are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, I think Ms. Missit got that, and Mike will take you as a second. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Next, we have the good news portion of the meeting. Dr. Rice? So sorry. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda? Thank you. Now, on to good news.
All right, uh, the first one is our Stokes County Educator of Excellence. It's Ms. Collins. There she is. All right, I'll turn it over to Ms. Collins.
Good evening. In lieu of the regular education of excellence celebration, which didn't occur this year due to the cancellation of our annual conference of exceptional children and COVID safety measures, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Exceptional Children's Division has created a new way for districts to recognize outstanding educators, related service personnel, and exceptional educators, um, and special education support staff providing services to students with disabilities. Extraordinarily exceptional educators will present, be presented with a certificate, and their pictures will be posted via a virtual recognition board on the NCDPI Exceptional Children's Division website. Recognizations of nominated staff will occur three times throughout this school year. Our first recognition goes to Brandy Jones for her hard work and dedication to the students at South Stokes High School. Here is what Mrs. Cheek had to say about Mrs. Jones. I would like to nominate Brandy Jones for the 2020-2021 extraordinarily exceptional educator recognition. Mrs. Jones is one of the strongest advocates for students in our school, and I would argue our school system. Mrs. Jones has gone above and beyond working to build relationships with parents, working with teachers to accommodate student learning needs, and identifying barriers to achievement and helping create plans to overcome them. Although she has a strong background in reading, she has become our primary math inclusion teacher and now serves in every level of math instruction. She works with her co-teachers seamlessly, using every model of co-teaching, and is an active member of the co-teaching team during walkthrough and observations. Mrs. Jones also seamlessly brings her expertise and word knowledge into the math classroom, leading math teachers to regularly incorporate math vocabulary lessons into daily instruction. On top of her co-teaching and headcount responsibilities, Mrs. Jones also helps lead her membership on the school improvement team and culture and climate subcommittee. Mrs. Jones is an outstanding teacher who helps South Stokes and Stokes County Schools better, makes it better by being part of our family. Uh, congratulations to Brandy Jones on being our extraordinarily exceptional educator in Stokes County Schools. And, uh, Mrs. Jones could not be here tonight, but we will make sure we get her, um, certificate to her.
And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose and Ms. McGee for our district Christmas card winners.
All right, as you have probably seen from these Christmas cards, we have some talented artists, uh, here in Stokes County. Um, once I call the name, if you would, come up and see Ms. McGee. We have a gift card for you and a certificate. We will go ahead and start with our elementary. I'd like to call up Kara Rhodes from Pine Hall Elementary, first grade. She was our elementary winner. She is the daughter of Dakota and Garrett Rhodes of Walnut Cove. Yes, we'll get that to her. Next up, we have our middle school winner. Eli Wells is in the sixth grade at Pine Grove Middle School, the son of Robert and Tara Wells. Eli, come on up. Congratulations. And if you would stay up here, we'll get a picture with the board. And for our high school winner, our high school winner is from South Stokes High School in the 10th grade, Audrey Smith, the daughter of James and April Williams of Germanton. Congratulations. And we would love to be able to get a picture with the board members.
And parents, please feel free to move up and get as many pictures as you want. This is about you and your children.
I had come to you in October about requesting permission to move forward on an I cares grant. We had written that to try to get an after-school program for our middle schools for the last nine weeks to try to make up on some of the learning loss that we had, that we had seen or that we will see. And then also to run a summer camp for our middle school students to try to address some of the grades. This was a very competitive grant. There were 57 LEAs that applied for this and they only awarded 13 of them. During the midst of this, I discovered sort of a new way to write these, too. We use Google Docs and we took the questions and we were able to collaborate. And it's such a blessing in Stokes County to have wonderful partners to work with, with Insight and also with the YMCA. We worked together and we wrote up every component of that grant and Stokes County came in 10th. We got $200,000 to go ahead and set up this after-school program for the last nine weeks to help out our middle schoolers and also for our week-long summer camp. So I didn't bring certificates this evening, but I would love to have Mr. Edwards with the Y and our Insight representatives, Terry, Lori, come on up. And I would love to get a picture with the board members for this, too, because this is a pretty big accomplishment. Thank you all.
And Madam Chair, that concludes the good news portion.
At this time, we have public comments. And there's no one signed up. Ms. Boljack, okay, thank you. At this point, we have the consent agenda, which are items A, approval of the regular session minutes for November 16th, as well as approval of fundraising requests. Any questions or concerns there? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve or second, whoever.
Okay, so Mr. Bryant motioned and Mr. Rogers second. Thank you, all those in favor. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the discussion agenda. Item A, discussion of policy review and revisions.
Board members, as you remember, last school year, we contracted with the School Board Association to look over our policies and to suggest revisions to that. They are nearly complete with that. They have one or two more sections to go. But last year, we also did something different. We had a policy committee and with the new board in place tonight, I wanted to see how y'all wanted to proceed with that. If you wanted to continue with a committee approach for that with policies, or if you want us to just bring you policies to the board meetings and then, you know, approve them as we did prior to last year. So I just want to know how y'all want to proceed moving forward because we do have sections of those that have been approved by the School Board Association and we need to start bringing them to you for approval so we can get our policy manual updated.
Thoughts? Mr. Bryant, you can go first.
Things on, yeah. Okay, so instead of having committees, you're just going to bring them to the board meetings and we will look at them, discuss them, and then maybe put it off to the next meeting, vote on it or move it to action.
My first, my first three years here, the way we did this was we would bring them to a discussion item in the agenda. And so we would have them there. You would get your materials obviously earlier in the week. So you would have a chance to look over those and, and look, you know, have any questions you could certainly ask us. But then we would discuss them as a group and if there were no, no major changes, we would put them on, they have to sit for 30 days and in the next month, they would be approved. Mr. Johnson usually presents those to the group and talks about any significant changes that, that has happened, whether that's legal changes or maybe just some wording changes and, and he would explain that to you. And then the next meeting, they would be approved to go into our, our policy manual. Last year, the board wanted to have a committee approach. Ms. Tetter served on that committee, met with Mr. Johnson, myself and Dr. Taylor. We did that in February and, and got several approved and then COVID hit and the committee hasn't met since then. So we actually have quite a few to do. It's just how you want, do you want to appoint somebody to serve as a committee and, and bring that recommendation to the board? Or do you want to just do it as a full board?
We can check with Ms. Messick. Do you have a preference, Ms. Messick?
I, I felt like that having the committee, you know, at that time was a, a good idea because there was a lot of policies that really needed to be looked at and reworked. And I think that, that happened. I think that a lot of those policies were reworked and redone, ones especially that needed it. But I don't see anything wrong with just bringing the ones to the full board like you've done in years past. And then we could take them home and study them. But that's just my opinion.
Mr. Rogers, can you hear me? What's your opinion, sir?
I think we did it last year or we, I pushed for it because our, our policies were so upside down, we had three policies that would contradict the next three. Is that cleaned up, Dr. Rice?
Yes, sir. According to the School Board Association, they have gone through and cleaned up all of those and have them in the latest compliance with the latest laws.
Okay, then we can bring, I mean, I've got no problem with just eliminating the committee and bringing it back. Plus during COVID, we don't know when the committee is ever going to be able to meet.
Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I would agree. I think just bringing it before the board would be fine with me.
Okay, that, we'll do that then, present it to the board and move forward that way. Thank you.
We'll have some ready for you in January.
Next, we have discussion of NC Star comprehensive reports.
Board members, I have shared a document with you that tells you a little bit about the system NC Star, also known as EndaStar. I've given you a chart that has the logins for every single one of our schools so that you can actually see their comprehensive plans. That serves as their school improvement plan. That is what their sit team operates within. The easiest way to think about NC Star is that it's a digital file cabinet for the school. That's the best descriptor that I've found for it. The entire system consists of 130 indicators and school improvement teams will meet, go over a self-assessment to determine what the needs of the school are, and then they will decide which indicators they wish to work on and they will discuss which action steps will lead them towards successfully completing that objective or indicator. There are multiple levels of access within NC Star. We have district oversight, which is a login that I have. Each principal and process manager has a login as well, that they're able to make changes within the system, update who the team members are, and change the indicators and create meeting minutes. Then you have leadership teams that can see the details of the plan. And then we have our guest login, which will allow you to see team members. It will allow you to see the overall comprehensive plan. We had approved these last spring per board vote, but I wanted to put those in front of you again for approval, again for this year. As we move forward, this spring, we will do another needs assessment with every single school. And then we will start our planning in August, moving forward. And my goal is to have those plans voted on at the schools by September and have them back to you for approval again next year in October and set that up as an annual approval from there. But this login is ongoing. Once we do the submission of those plans, our state will have access to those as well. But each one of those logins that you have, if you go into the website at the bottom with EndaStar, you can put in those logins and see each school improvement plan. Do you all have any questions for me in regards to that system or these plans?
Mr. Rogers, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Messick?
Go into the state so that, aren't all school systems hooked up to this and can't you go into any school system and see their school improvement?
You can. A couple of systems do it differently. Some, once they upload, will take the PDF that's created and just upload that document. We use these guest logins so that if we make a change in the system, it's immediate. And when you go into that guest login, you'll see the changes that were made at the previous meeting.
It's an active document.
It is, it is. And typically, once we submit for that PDF, it will be, it will be sent in to the state for them to review and look over. But the gentleman, Alexandro, is the one who kind of leads us through the process. He can look in at any time and they can provide coaching feedback to us through the plans. I can provide feedback directly to our schools as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Bryant? Mr. Robertson? Okay, so it sounds like the reassessment is in the spring to see what progress has been gained and what things have been accomplished?
We will do the, the FAMAS, which is a self-assessment that we do each year. So from that, hopefully we'll see that we're advancing and moving forward. Also, as we meet indicators, those will change and update within the system. So once we see as a school that we have met that particular standard or indicator, we'll change the goal and change the indicator from there.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, if you all run into any questions as you're reviewing, just let me know. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have discussion of capital project overview and update.
Yes, board members, in your packet, you have a list of the capital budget update. Starting with the one, it's, it's for emergencies. We just do those as needed. The playground fall protection, number two, we have completed King Elementary. We've got Lawsonville about 95% completed. We was a little bit short on the mulch there. The rest of the playgrounds look pretty good for now because as you recall, our students didn't play on them this, this spring. Moving on down, the fire alarm at London is completed. And for board members, the WIP, that means work in progress. If they're highlighted, that means they're completed. South Stokes gym floor, we had a pre-bid on that on 9/25. We only had one contractor show up. We had to rebid that project. We rebid it on December the 10th. The bid opening for that is on January the 8th. So we hope to be bringing those bids to the board in the meeting in January. King Elementary on the ramps, that was out for bid for red team. I did get my bids back today from them on that. I've got to go to Dr. Rice for that to approval to get that project going. The roofs at Lawsonville, Nancy Reynolds, and also number 12 at North Stokes, we had the DPI engineer up on December the 3rd. He's currently working on Lawsonville and North Stokes as our number one, number two. He's got some other schools he has to do before he comes back to Nancy Reynolds on those. But we don't have a, a pre-bid date set at this time. The chillers at West Stokes, that would be, was awarded to Stanley Heating and Air. The equipment is on order. We're hoping to, to do that, maybe starting sometime in late January, 1st to February, do it when it's cold outside. South Stokes boiler and Pine Grove burner, that was awarded to Professional Air. We're hoping to complete those over Christmas break. The gym floors, the schools are coordinating those projects. And Pine Hall, the septic tank repair, that was added after the capital was approved by the board. That, that came to our attention. That is when the engineer, we have to submit plans to the state for approval on that. And so he's working on that as well. Carryover projects for new board members, that was projects that was approved to be done in the 1920 school year. They didn't get completed in that year and they were carried over into this year. And those projects include Mount Olive lighting, that is complete. West Stokes track, Southeastern, the front canopy, Pine Grove student desk and the CTE addition at West Stokes. And in your packet as well, I took some photographs on the capital update. The first one is the Mount Olive lighting. It's, it's before. As you can see in that picture, some of the lenses are missing. Those lenses are obsolete. That's one reason we had to replace the lighting. The second picture is after. We were able to go in on that and do what they call a retro kit. Left the existing fixture in place, just took out the lens and bulbs and replaced it with this LED retro kit. Schools real, real pleased with it. In most cases, they're only burning half the lights to get enough light they need. The next one is the classroom for the CTE addition. As you know, it was built on back of the Ag building up there. The next picture is the CTE, that's the shop area. Mr. Robertson, he said, well, he knew if I was coming to take pictures that day, he would have cleaned it up a little bit better. I said, well, it looks good because you got stuff laying around. That shows people are, are working in it. Next photo is the West Stokes track. In this picture, if you look on the far left and far right, it's a concrete curb. That's one thing we added to this track and I'll go a bit more in detail on that here in just a moment. The next photograph is looking back towards the fieldhouse. The track is complete and ready to use. The next photo is the concrete curb. This curb is about eight inches wide, but about 16 inches deep. This was built so they, they were able to have something to form the gravel and asphalt, too. Plus this also gives an area for the school to maintain the, the grass, the Bermuda grass, back to the edge of the concrete and not get in and onto the rubber or the asphalt and destroy it. The next photo is the canopy at Southeastern Middle School. It connects the canopy that come out from the main office to the, the rest of the school. The next photograph is a little bit better to the, the high canopy that it attached to. Are there any questions?
Mr. Rogers, do you have any questions, sir?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you.
Ms. Messick?
Well, one of the things I'd like to say is I am so glad that the canopy has now been put at Southeastern. Well, one of the things I'd like to say is I am so glad that the canopy has now been put at Southeastern to, you know, finish that project, because a couple of years ago, we just put part of it. And so now, I feel like that's all complete, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, the West Stokes track looks great.
It does.
In the pictures, so I'll have to drive out there and really look, but it just looks fabulous. I'm really glad on that, because that had a lot of holes in it, and then there were parts of the track you could pick and flout.
The existing rubber had turned loose, and it was just laying there.
And also, they weren't able to have a track meet there for about three years. Is that right?
That's correct.
And then Chestnut Grove does not have a track. They're the only middle school that we have that does not have a track that the students can have a track meet at. And this has been for years and years. And so they all have to have their track meets at West Stokes. And so now, finally, they can use that too. So it's really been a blessing to be able to have this track fixed. And so we appreciate all the work you did on that. I do want to talk about the Mount Olive lighting. It's pretty bright over there. I mean, is that why some of them are just using partial lights? Because it's L, is it LTD?
LED.
LED. It's a lot brighter. So have you had any comments about it?
The existing lighting in the classrooms was put on two switches, so they could turn half the old lights off anyway. So the new lights were wired back the same way. And that's what some of the classrooms are doing.
Right. Is there... Later on, I know they're brand new and all the lighting's put in, but could any of those lights ever be... The bulbs switched out if it just got to where it was so bright?
You can't switch out a LED. They technically doesn't have what we think of as a bulb. It has a driver that runs a strip of lights, so you don't switch those out. If anything goes bad, it's usually what they call the driver in the light. The only thing we could do at this point would be go over and disconnect some lights, if it's too bright in some areas.
Okay, so if it got to where, you know, in some of those areas that you could still go over and fix it in some way?
Yes.
Yeah. That looks great in the pictures. Okay, thank you. I think you've done a great job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryant?
I was just looking at these lights. I know that that's going to save us a lot of money on our energy bills too.
That's correct.
And when you retrofit them, that's a whole lot cheaper than buying the whole fixtures. You did a great job there.
Thank you.
Real great job. And the track looks good, and I do like the fact that you put that curb so that Bermuda grass can't grow up under it and break it loose. Is that probably some of the stuff that happened before was the Bermuda grass tearing the old track up?
No, one thing at that track, we added some additional drainage down towards the fieldhouse. But in that area, the water just ponded. And it ponded on the rubber and just turned the rubber loose from the track. You could actually go up, and it was just like a rug liner. You could just pick it up and flap it in the wind. So we added additional drainage there, catch basins at each end of that, redefined all the ditches between the catch basins on the field, and reseeded that back to get the drainage off the field.
Right.
Off the track, excuse me.
Sounds like you are right on the spot there. Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, same here. I think the work looks great. Looks like y'all did a really good job, the good quality work. Hopefully, it's going to hold up and last a long time, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention the West Stokes CTE addition. That has really been a great thing for the CTE program. And kids are working in there now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
When they can go two days a week, one week, and three days a week the next?
I don't know the schedule they're working. I just know that day I was there, there were some students in our room.
So they have been in there using it?
Yes, ma'am.
And so the sink got put in, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So is it toward the back in the picture?
It's not in that room. It's actually in the existing room where they added the new restrooms. It's between the boy and girls' new restrooms.
Okay, well, thank you. This helped our program so much to have an addition like that.
Madam Chair, while Mr. Goins is at the podium, Dr. Rice and I would like to say a special thank you. Not only does he do a good job with day-to-day work such as this. Mr. Goins spends a lot of time at our buildings at night and over the weekend. The last two weekends in particular. We had some broken windows at London last weekend, and then this past weekend, they were working on getting a boiler fixed, so we would have heat today. So we want to say a special thank you to Mr. Goins and his staff for the work that they do.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Thank you. I echo their sentiments as far as everything looks great. You know, I know we're at the mercy of DPI with these roofs as far as... We have, I believe, three here on the list. And the severity of Lawsonville as well as North Stokes, you know, is concerning going into winter, so I'm hoping that he couldn't tell you if it would be six weeks, 12 weeks to get back?
He's working on the plans now. We're hoping to bid it out 1st of January.
Okay. Well, we look forward to that, and thank you so much, and tell your staff as well.
All right. Thank you, board members.
Next, we have discussion of relaunch 2020. Dr. Rice?
Board, just a quick update. As of yesterday's data, 12/13/20, Stokes County as a whole, not our schools, had 134 active cases, which is 0.3% of the population, if you consider 45,000 the population. I know that that's a fluctuating number. I just used that number as a round number to use. Overall, they've had 1,554 total cases, which is 3.45% of the population. Our staff, as of yesterday, had nine active cases, which is 1% of a staff of 900, kind of ballparking that. And so far this year, we've had 48 total cases, which is 5.3% of our staff members. Students, yesterday, we had 15 active cases, which is 0.26% of our student body of 5,704. And so far this year, we've had 81 total cases, which is 1.42% of our students. The two big numbers to report is clusters. The state reports clusters, which is five or more in a setting that are related, and Stokes County Schools has had no clusters this year. The other one that is very important is school spread. And that is transmission from one person to another at school. And we have had no cases of school spread this year. I checked with the Health Department this, late this afternoon, and as of about 3 o'clock this afternoon, they told me we have had no cases of school spread. Now, we've had cases of, you know, multiple people in a school, but they've traced it back to a birthday party, or a wedding, or another event, but there is no cases at this point of transmission from school to school. The only one, if you wanted to question that, is parents and children, where they live in the same family. We've had some that may be a student in a school and a parent teaches in a school, but they also live together, and so on the weekends, and the Health Department has said that's more where the transmission occurred from parent to child rather than at the school. That's what they blamed, and I'm not the Health Department, so I'm going to say what they said, which is no school transmission. So for that, and we had changed our elementary schedule, and we said that we would revisit that toward the end of the semester. And I would like to stay on this same schedule for the second half of the school year. With so many changes that have occurred already, that would be something stable. I know at the beginning, there was some childcare issues and timing that had to be worked out. That appears to have been worked out, and to change back would give parents something else that they needed to worry about. And also, without knowing what the state's going to do, the state could go back to a Plan B in elementary school, or they could say all remote again. And so just to try to keep some level of consistency, we would like to stay on that same schedule, starting in second semester. We also do plan to return to school January 4th. I know some districts have talked about, after the holiday break, doing two weeks of remote or three weeks of remote and coming back. And if there are numbers issues that we see over the holiday break, that we need to make that decision, we certainly would, but we don't have that right now. And so we would like to bring our children back. We think it's important to have school, since it's important for students to be in our building and to be under a teacher. I believe in the power of a teacher, and so that is my plan right now, is to return to school in our buildings on January 4th with the same schedule that we have now. Again, if the governor changes any of that, I certainly would comply with the governor's orders and would let you know and announce that to parents as quickly as possible. Also, one thing that with the school spread of not having that, again, we've been doing driver's ed and athletics since the summer. So a little bit of the high school athletic update. We are currently in cross-country volleyball and swimming. We've been doing those sports now for several weeks, and things have been going well. And coming up soon, basketball practice has begun. Their first set of games statewide will begin around January 4th. Lacrosse practice will begin in... Lacrosse and soccer will begin practicing in the middle of January, and games will begin at the end of January. And then football, seems odd, will start practice in early February. And they will start games February 26th. It will be our first set of football games this year, which is odd, but just kind of lets you see a little bit into the future of that. Middle school has been doing tennis and soccer so far, and cross-country as well. I failed to put that in my notes, but I do know cross-country's been going as well. Basketball will start up in January, and then volleyball and football, excuse me, and swimming will take on place through the spring. One other change to let you know about is cheerleading. Because of the limits indoors, we are making cheerleading an outdoor-only sport for this year. And so they will be able to do football outside, and then, of course, if there's other sports that they would like to cheer for outside, if they, you know, basically you're taking away basketball. And right now, we're limited in the gyms to 25 fans. And those are going, two tickets for the home team. Players, like if you have 12 people on a team, that's 24 tickets. Well, with cheerleaders, that would be an extra set, and so it would be harder to social distance and all of that. So we are saying that cheerleading would be an outdoor sport for football. And again, if they wanted to cheer at baseball games, or lacrosse, or some of those outdoor activities, we would be fine with that if they so choose. But most sports are being shortened seasons, and so, you know, that's kind of fair with cheerleading as well, getting a little bit shorter season with something else, unless they wanted to cheer for another sport outside. But just with the limits that we have in place, it's very difficult to get them inside the gyms at this time. Are there any questions about that set of data, or any other questions you have about what we're doing with relaunch right now?
Mr. Rogers, do you have any questions, sir?
No, I'm thankful we're at least making our attempts to stay in school.
Yes, sir. Ms. Messick?
Just that I'm glad that we're able to have athletics, because a lot of kids, that means the world to them. And so I do feel like that going ahead and having athletics, even though it's limited and it's in and out of season really, I think that it's caused a lot of students to still stay in school and stay in our county. And so I think that it's appreciated by the students. I do.
Mr. Bryant?
I'd just like to say that I thank you, Dr. Rice, Dr. Taylor, and all your staff for the hard work you're doing through all this COVID stuff, and all to keep the kids in school the best that you can, making the best informed decisions that you can. I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate it. And I know the kids appreciate that they're going to get to play some sports. Just keep on keeping on. I think you're doing a fine job. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Bryant, that I think the staff is doing a great job. I know we all look forward to the day when all the kids, all the students can be back in school all the time. I know that's when they perform the best. I know my daughter's a junior in high school, and I think she does better when she's in school, not just at home on the computer. She still does good. But being back in school, being back in the classroom full-time is really important for them. So again, thank y'all for your work. I know we're at the mercy of the governor a lot of the time, and most, all the time, and we kind of have to follow these rules. But we do look forward to the day we can all get back in school. Thank y'all.
I will also add that I wanted to relay, I have had concerns from elementary teachers, you know, a handful at a certain school that have asked for the hour back, you know, saying that that hour, you know, they needed to do assessments or time to regain with students. So I just wanted to pass that along, if that's something that could be considered maybe at next semester, or either ask those elementary teachers.
We asked those elementary teachers, and about 90% of them said to stay on the same schedule.
How long ago did you ask?
Last week.
Okay.
The results were due Friday, and so last week we asked.
Okay.
And so a resounding majority of them asked to stay on it. Now, I will say, this is not the solution moving forever and ever. Next school year, we plan to be back on a regular schedule. But with as many changes as we've had this year, again, I... Ms. McGee, I don't know if you did the full math. Last time I checked, there was still one school that didn't report, and it was over 90%. And then that school came in at well over 90%. So it's well over 90% of our teachers have asked for that, to ask for it to stay the same.
Okay. Thank you. And I know there had been some question or concerns over January 4th, but again, that was a day that was marked on the calendar that could potentially be lost as far as, you know, being concerned with students coming back right after the holiday. Could, you know, I think some teachers may be in there over that weekend and things, or that end of that week, New Year's, to prepare. Your thoughts on that?
Well, we have an early release day on the 22nd. They could stay the rest of the day and be ready for that Monday. And instead of leaving early that day, that would be one way to plan ahead. But very rarely do we come back to a workday. Normally, it comes to the holiday straight back. That is a normal part of the calendar. Now, with the days this year, the Calendar Committee did look to do that, but with the well-understanding that weather may take that day. And again, we're sitting in December, and obviously, they're talking about wetter weather for Wednesday that may stretch into Thursday. So, you know, as you start taking away days, there's not that many left in the spring semester, if you look at it. There's not that many workdays left, so if we were to take something...
Close to spring break, yeah.
A Saturday, staying later into the school year after Memorial Day. And none of those are popular options. Everybody, I mean, you're never going to come up with a day that everyone agrees with. And so the calendar, when it was made, those days were clearly put on there as these would be the makeup days if weather happens. And that was the next one on the list that, again, there's not that many left, and there's a lot of winter left.
Right, I know. I did compare it to last year as far as, you know, we did have the... We typically, it seems like we tend to have the workday before students return after Christmas. But I understand it was clearly marked on the calendar. And going forward for the Calendar Committee, you know, are they able by the state guidelines to mark a day as like a mandatory workday that you couldn't lose if weather was a possibility? Or do they all have to be potential days lost?
The only days in the calendar that cannot be lost are Veterans Day... That is the only day, correct? That is the only day that is in the calendar that has, that cannot be changed for any reason, is the Veterans Day holiday. Every other one would be on the table for a swap-out day for weather.
Okay. Thank you so much. And again, we greatly appreciate all that you guys do. Thank you.
I just thought of a question. Suppose that before we get out for Christmas, we do have, say it's snow day. What happens? How will you announce that? As far as, was that just a day that there won't be any remote learning? It'll just be like a regular stay-at-home day?
We've already had a discussion about later this week and what some options are going to be. There are some days that will be, we will turn into remote learning days that we won't have to make up. The reason we're having to make up one to take out for that January 4th day is we had that day where half the county didn't have electricity. So teachers weren't able to teach, students weren't able to log on. And to call that a remote learning day would have not been honest, to be honest. And so that's why we made that a workday. But I know there's some people worried about never having another snow day because of the remote learning day options. snow day because of the remote learning day options. If there's a lot of white snow on the ground that kids can go play in, we will probably have some snow days. That's not really what they're calling for Wednesday. I don't know that you can ball up a little hunk of ice that may be on the ground, and so it may not be very fun to play with. So that may be a remote learning day. We have already talked about, high school exams are supposed to start Wednesday, and so we've talked about those opportunities, how we would shift our schedule to get exams in as well. But if we were to be out of school this Wednesday, I foresee that being a remote learning day, which would swap out with probably that March 12 remote learning day, which would move that for the early college, it would be February 12, would be that remote learning days. Those would become regular instructional days if we were to miss on Wednesday. So we try to swap out even things, so a remote learning day for an instructional day, and that's how we would probably proceed if that were to happen on Wednesday.
So the remote learning day, would the teachers still go in?
Depending on the weather, some days we have asked them to do remote learning days at home, and some days we've asked them to come into the school, depending on what kind of weather we have is what kind of decision we would make. Probably, if it's a weather decision, we would allow them to stay at home if they would like.
Okay. So you would announce it like?
Yes, ma'am. We would announce that. Normally, we will make that announcement, two different announcements, one for students, and they don't need all the teacher stuff, so we would make a separate one for teachers to let them know what to do.
Thank y'all. Next, any other questions or concerns? No. We have the action agenda. We have Item A, approval of personnel and coaching reports. Are there any discussion or comments or questions regarding the personnel and coaching reports that we've already reviewed?
Make a motion to approve personnel and coaching.
I have a motion seconded by Mr. Robertson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have approval of athletic funding assistance. Are there any discussion or questions regarding the athletic funding assistance? We had kind of reviewed that and discussed it last meeting, but do you guys have any questions?
I just want to be clear on one thing for the public now. With each school, we're giving up two $20,000 for the high schools and up to $5,000 assistance to the middle schools. But that doesn't mean that they're going to get the full amount. They're just going to get reimbursed what they spend up to that.
That is correct.
If they go over that, it's just on them.
Well, and if for some reason the High School Athletic Association came in, or our middle school conference came in and said, okay, we're having too many outbreaks, I'm sorry, outbreaks is an assisted living term, we can't have an outbreak in a school. So if we had a cluster or enough reason, and they were to cancel sports, you know, we would only reimburse them at the end of the season based on what they spent up to those amounts.
Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to approve Item B, the athletic funding assistance.
Athletic, the financial assistance for the middle school and the high school athletic programs.
All right. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have information and announcements.
Board Members, we have several things to share with you this evening. In regard to the calendar, you have the dates. You have the dates there in front of you. I'd also like to mention, each year, we typically bring to you in December at least two calendars for you to consider for approval. But if you will remember, the state, the General Assembly, changed the rules on us in July of when we could start. They have not given us any guidance for the 2021, 2021 school year, 21, 22 school year as of yet. So we have not created, we have not developed any draft calendars for you to review, because we don't know what the rules are going to be at this point. So as soon as we hear back from Raleigh, the General Assembly, we'll begin crafting some draft calendars to share with you. To that, in the past, I believe Stokes County has brought, administration has brought sample calendars to you for review. Last year, we used a Calendar Committee. Much like the policy conversation earlier, what is the preference of the board regarding calendar development and presentation moving forward? Do you want to keep the Calendar Committee approach, or would you like for administration to develop some draft calendars to share with you?
Mr. Rogers, your thoughts, sir?
To me, the Calendar Committee worked well last year because we got input from both parents and faculty and staff. So it was total buyout, and it wasn't just a one-sided perspective.
Thank you. Ms. Messick?
I agree with the Calendar Committee approach, because I do feel like parents should be able to be on that committee, and teachers, and other staff members that work in the school systems, and administrators. But I do feel like the committee approach is the best way. It makes it seem fair to everybody with input.
Mr. Bryant?
I have to agree with Ms. Messick there on the committee, because that gives everybody a say in it. I know the administration does a great job, and they will have their say, too. It just, it allows parents and everybody to have some say.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Yeah, I would agree with the committee. I think that sounds good, and I like the idea that there's more input from the teachers and the parents. So I would be in favor of that.
One thing that's good about the committee is it gives a chance to educate the committee on the calendar laws and how restrictive they are. And so we would always encourage people that after they go through that process, to reach out to legislators and ask for more flexibility for the school districts, because it is very restrictive as it is currently set up. And I will say, I did speak with Representative Hall earlier tonight, and I've reached out to him and Senator Berger and asked if there was any timeline for when we may get rules for this year's calendar. And Mr. Hall said that he would check, and I'm waiting to hear back from Senator Berger. So if any of you see any of those people, please advocate on our behalf that a timeline would be great, and some rules would be great. So as once we have the rules, we can set up a calendar. One other thing on that page is the board meetings schedule. We have one scheduled for January 11, a work session, and then one for the 25th, a regular session. I'd spoken to Mr. Rogers back a few months ago as board chair about that, and we tentatively set one meeting in the middle of that time, but knowing that a new board would be elected and a new chair would be in place, it is up to the board. There's, with the January 1 holiday, the King holiday, it's kind of a disjointed time. So the last year or two, we have done one meeting in January, so we would like to ask your preference. Would you like to have the two meetings in January, or would you like to split that difference and have one meeting in January? I would, I'd like to ask for your input so we can set that calendar as well.
Mr. Rogers?
I'm good either way. I mean, it's, Dr. Rice, how much are we going to have to cover in January?
Well, you never know everything. I do know we will have some policies. And if we, and we will look to get you those policies earlier, because there will be a section of those. So in addition to the regular time we send out the minutes, we will send out some policies in advance of that to give you a chance to go over that. But other than that, I'm not aware of a lot of heavy lifting, if you will, that we need to do at that meeting other than policy.
Okay. And even the policies have to stay for 30 days, so it's not a urgent, critical thing.
Correct. That would be something that we would look at, and then they would finally be approved in February.
And we could always readdress any questions at the February work session.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm good either way, then.
Ms. Messick?
Well, I'm good either way, but in years past, we've just had the one meeting, and it's been sufficient. I feel like so. I'm good with just one meeting in January.
Mr. Bryant?
I'm good either way, too. And one meeting's fine with me if that's what the consensus of the board wants, and that Dr. Rice feels like that's sufficient. I'm good with it.
Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I would agree. If the administration thinks that one meeting is sufficient, then I'm good with that.
Dr. Rice, if you foresee actions that need to be taken, or if we need additional time as far as reviewing, you know, we're welcome to do the two, if you'll just let us know, because potentially it would be January 11 as well as the 25.
Right now, well, that's what the schedule would be currently, but we would just have a meeting on the 11th at 6:00 PM if we were to do one. And that way, the King holiday would be the week after that, and that would allow people to take that vacation day without trying to prepare for a meeting for the next week. It allows staff a little bit to actually take their vacation days on January 1 and the King holiday to have one meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We have a few additional items. You have some fundraisers for your information there. Dr. Rice just discussed with you the board meetings, upcoming board meetings. You also have the third month PMR, which is the Principal's Monthly Report. That indicates our student enrollment at our 19 schools. You can see the total and the difference from the month before. And then you also have the calendars as they are currently, they have been updated. You have both the traditional calendar and the early college calendar. So that's all that we have for information, unless you have any questions for us.
And right now, a total of 5,567 students enrolled, correct, which has really remained well considering COVID and... Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Rice, if we just have the one meeting in January, is it going to be a morning 8:30 meeting or a 6:00 PM meeting?
Normally, when we have the one meeting, whether it being a public meeting, we try to do that at the evening. So we would say that one meeting at 6:00 PM with a closed session at 5:30 if the board chair and the board approves.
Anything further at this time, Dr. Rice? Then I need a motion to go into closed. Do we need to finish what we were discussing with Fred earlier? I need a motion to go into closed session, please. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go into closed.